We've got two new ones coming tomorrow.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna listen. I'm gonna listen and memorize it. This is only gonna be an hour long meeting anyway.
Jerry, do you want to sign this?
Sure.
Dave, can I get it back? Sorry. Okay, it looks like everybody ready? Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Reedfield Select Ward. It is April 7th at 6:30 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll note that Sean is excused absent tonight.
Steve, that is...
For you. Double trouble. Okay. The first item on the agenda tonight is the Select Board Meeting Minutes of March 24th. Does anyone want to make a motion?
The meeting minutes for March 24th meeting as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, that is unanimous. The next item is the warrants number 39 through 40. That was item 25-085. And is this old person or new person? New person, Dave.
Old person, old person.
Yeah, it's to me, I believe.
I guess you're not old tonight, so you're good.
Yeah, big highlights were obviously the RSU for $363,099. Final payment, I believe, right for the year for, to Scott Horn for the plowing.
He might have one more in April.
Oh, okay.
He will, yes.
We're getting the fairgrounds going. We had 3,265 and that was a bunch of the permits required, correct? The DP, 6,600 in main dispatch fees. 96, 27 for the waste management. Those are all tipping fees, I believe. And our payment to the winter ambulance for $28,836.
Am I on the same board?
So these are the ones from tonight? Well, it's, it's, it's good to know what's going on. But yeah, this is, that was the one from that we looked at tonight that we haven't, we haven't...
Maybe I didn't review that one.
We haven't put it in the packet yet, but we're just gonna primer for next time.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Well, so next, next meeting, you would just replay the tape.
I do believe I did the same thing the last, I'm not supposed to do this. I looked at the wrong one.
I don't know.
Um, it looks like there was a...
When was this?
Uh...
It would have been March, two weeks ago, yeah.
3/24.
March 24th, but actually it wasn't mine. So that would have been Sean's, right? Was Sean doing the last?
Yeah, it was Sean. Yeah.
All right, well, I'll cover for him then. See, it was the old person. Um, so 6,41242 was to Elon Financial Services. Is that our copier?
Elon is the catch-all for the credit card.
Ah.
So that could be a number of things.
And so that gets dispersed.
Yep.
Fire tech and safety was 1,993. Greenwood emergency vehicles for $1,135.
They provide equipment for the fire department.
Ah, yes.
I don't know exactly what that is, but that's the, yeah.
Fire trucks.
Yeah, fire trucks.
And then there was a bunch of insurance and motor vehicle fees and nothing else remarkable. So the total warrant looks like with payroll, $80,377.24.
Make motion to accept forms 39 and 44, total of $80,377.24.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor? Thank you. It was unanimous.
Well, we should be able to save five minutes off the next meeting.
There we go. All right. We have Select Board communications for five minutes if there's any information anyone would like to share. Seeing none, we'll move on to staff communication. Eric, you have 10 minutes for the town manager and treasurer's reports.
Okay, I'll move through it a little bit more quickly than that. It's actually pretty, pretty, it's going pretty well right now. The trio web rollout, I'll start with my town manager's report, the trio web rollout has been good so far, a few bumps, but nothing catastrophic. I think overall, it's kind of trading one thing for the next. It's better in some areas. It's not as good in other areas. We had some issues with connectivity, but then we've had some, you know, benefits of having better reporting abilities and things like that. So it's, it's, it's kind of back and forth, but overall, I'd say it's a little bit better. But I just wanted to thank the public for their patience as we're working through that because sometimes things don't work, and a judge has to say. You know, I'm really sorry, we have to come back later, but not, not any more than what we had to do in the past with the other trio at this point, so.
There's work around us.
There's work around us. Yeah, yeah. So we're, we're holding to account on their, on their updates. The town meeting warrant is essentially complete and that's, you know, less any budget changes. And that all will be presented at the public hearing on the 16th, so it's coming up next Wednesday. Karen Peterson applied for the cemetery sax position and, you know, we did advertise that for a fair bit. It was a fairly easy decision. She was the only applicant and the cemetery committee voted unanimously to, to recommend her for the, for the sax position. She had, had held that position previously, as noted. And because it's a stipend position, it is something that has to be done outside of her regular work hours. So I think it'll be a good fit and I'm glad to have that one filled. The other piece of this is that we were hiring for the maintenance position that that was split off of. And we received several applications for that. We interviewed two and we ended up making a hire last week. So I wanted to, you know, welcome Ryan Mank as our new maintenance person. He, like Ben Rodriguez, had been working at maintenance during, at Kent Hill doing maintenance. We pulled him away from there. And so he already comes with some experience and I think he'll be a good fit as well. And let's see, the beach attendant position, we had interviews on Friday and expect we'll make a hire, a hire, make a hire early this week. I don't know what's going on. And then we have a staff meeting scheduled for April 10th and that will be to cover basically the, the seasonal trainings, but also talk with our new retirement planning consultant. We, we switched providers after we weren't getting the servers that we wanted from the, the past one. So now we have a different intermediary there, but no real change to the, we're still with John Hancock. He's just a different financial advisor. Moving on to maintenance and transfer station, road posting will be pulled at the end of the week. Gravel roads to follow. We always try to pull those first, the paved roads first and then follow the gravel. We have signs up on, on loose road now. We had ordered them earlier in the season, but it took them two or three weeks to deliver, but they're road closed to through traffic. So what we're trying to do in next spring, when we have the thaw starting, those will go up immediately and we'll just advise people that unless you live on that road, it's not a cut through. Go the extra two minutes and, and make it easier on the residents that live there. So hopefully that'll have an effect, but those are up and we'll see how it goes. The ditching work and shoulder work will likely happen in April with paving in May. That's what we're looking at with contract, talking with the contractors about their schedules.
Is that the paving that we approved at our last meeting?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yep. And we're continuing to work on the salt sand project and the winter road maintenance contract. The, we did get a quote back from the engineers for the salt sand shed and it was over $100,000, so I haven't responded yet. That's, that's crazy for design work and I was hoping that this firm was one that would recognize what we were trying to do and not take a traditional engineering approach, which is to charge four times as much as you should and do five times as much work. And I, I just, I'm at a loss on that one. I, I... But we do have designs from multiple other towns that we can look at and from DOT, or not DOT, it's separate. Don't let me hear me say that. It's the Turnpike Authority. They, they had, yeah, some people get upset about that. But we have designs we can look at, so I think they will be okay and we can work with maybe this engineer or a different engineer and just ask them to modify an existing plan for our site. But there are a lot of things, things we could shave out, but any, any event, that's, that's a no-go. But we'll continue picking away. Spring work is planned at the transfer station in conjunction with the transfer station and maintenance staff. Basically, we're looking at a set of stairs to go down the side by where the metal bin is so they can have quicker and safer access down below. And also finalizing that little shelter for the MSW compactor equipment that we've been waiting on for a while now. But they've got some weather that can be favorable and some time. Community service activities and projects, this is all good news about the, the fairgrounds. We did get confirmation from the Army National Guard 133rd Engineering Battalion that they will be helping with the contract work that will need to happen there, doing the majority of the earthwork. The Select Board moving forward with the guarantee of funds was a big help and that application is now in process with the federal government, so we'll see where that goes. And the DEP permitting was submitted and paid for last week, so now we're on track, as Dave noted. He was... And so, and so we're... We're, we're moving ahead with that and I really do think that we're gonna be rocking and rolling on that pretty quickly. I'm planning on doing some volunteer work this summer against people together to start working on the fences and some of the tree work to get that area cleared out a little bit. So there's some stuff that's gonna happen this summer. But then we're on track very much for, provided the money comes through for completion next, next summer. Reedfield U is a great success this year as always. I want to thank the H family group and Jen for the work they put into that as well as everybody that participated in it. She's now working on the Easter egg hunt for the 12th and that is the Easter egg hunt, April 12th. I don't know what time, but I believe it's gonna be at the middle school where it typically is. And let's see, Jen's working on the spring sports as well. And then swim lessons are looking like reality with the YMCA. We're hoping to offer a seven-week session with four levels. So that's exciting to see that materializing. And that's my manager's report. Happy to take any questions. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Finances, this is for the month of March and our accounts are imbalanced. There was no unusual activity. It's been a good trend so far this year. We did initiate a new SEDARS following that discussion with the Select Board. April 2nd, we did that, 4.5% for $500,000, so that'll give us a pretty good yield when the time comes. Let's see, we are seeing things starting to look a little bit different. The SEDARS rates were higher than we thought. And we're at the point now where if we don't invest money, we're losing money because we're seeing things escalate and those rates are good. So I want to make sure that we continue to keep an eye on that and, and invest wisely. With the budget, our next meeting is, as noted, April 16th, 6:30 PM. That'll be via Zoom and in-person here at the town office and we can look at the budget and a little bit of the warrant at the end of that meeting, so that'll be the time spent there. General comments, we should be about 75% expanded for the year. Real estate payments continue to be up for the month and year-to-date as expected. Those, those trend with the budget. Last year, we had big increases on the school side and county and that really pushed us up. So, you know, we expect to see those increases on a monthly basis. Transfer station fees are down slightly for the month and year-to-date, but they are doing okay. They've been increasing a little bit the last few months, eating into that deficit that we saw earlier on. Motor vehicle revenue was up for the month and year-to-date with some major volatility expected. The tariffs have people, you know, buying cars now and early. We expect that those sales are gonna drop in a, in a month or two. As you know, motor vehicle revenues are one of the biggest revenues we have and it covers a majority, but not all of our paving and road maintenance expenses. Even at $600,000, we're still, we're spending, you know, 800 to a million every year. So it's a big revenue stream. We're hoping things stabilize, but we have to, that's completely out of our control. Expenses remain on target for the year and we do have a bit of a question mark, as noted with the way things are going. There's gonna be a lot of volatility just in the world in general for, for, for the time being. And that really includes, I think, all of the rest of this fiscal year for, for the town and other government entities. So we'll, I think, see revenues increase for the short term as people buy cars this month and next. And then they'll, we'll probably see a drop, so. But those impacts will be mostly next year. Outside of that, everything looks pretty normal. Expenses are on track, as I said, revenues are on track. And yeah, any, any questions?
Another great job. Thank you, Eric.
Thanks. Hopefully that was only like eight minutes, but we'll see.
It was 12.
It was 12, oh man.
I have to do Sean's, you know, timekeeping job.
I appreciate it. Well, that's it for me then.
Boards, committees, commissions and departments. How did I miss minutes? Oh, because they're afterwards. Okay, so we have two folks here from the library. If you would like to come to the podium and give us a brief update on how things are going at the library.
Hi there, Melissa Small, Library Director at the Reedfield Community Library. And I'm pleased to be here to provide this quarterly update on the library to the Select Board and town residents. First, I want to take a moment to mention the passing of John Knox in late December. John was a regular library volunteer in years past. And although I did not work with him in that capacity, I do know from conversations in recent years how much he appreciated our town library, the library services and programs we provide, and especially the work of the library volunteers. Now, just a few program updates. So I don't think I really told you about some of the regular ongoing programs that we have back in November when I last spoke with you, but I do want you to know that our regular programs continue to grow and draw new people into the library. So we have our weekly storytime on Tuesday mornings at 10:00 AM. We host an average of 10 children and their big people each week. Thanks to Pam Mitchell and Pat Clark for all their help with this program as well as our young adult volunteers who help prepare craft activities each week for the kids. We have a monthly book group for adults that draws between eight and 15 people monthly. The last Monday of each month, new participants are always welcome. Our crafting groups are expanding. We offer a weekly love to stitch on Tuesdays from 1:00 to 3:00. And that was so popular and working people wanted to get in on it, so we've added an evening sunset stitchers group twice a month on Mondays from 5:00 to 7:00. And these are intergenerational opportunities to enjoy your crafts with others, share ideas and make new connections with people in town with shared interests. Thanks especially to Lynn Mosher and also to Sue Cook and Lisa Fellows for helping to grow the interest in knitting, crocheting and other stitching arts by providing instruction and good fellowship. We also have a new cookbook club open to all. We choose a cookbook for people to read through, choose a recipe, prepare a dish and gather together to share a meal, enjoy a conversation and talk about the book and recipes. We've met once and we have another one coming up in May. That'll be sort of sporadic, maybe five or six times a year. We continue to offer great informational and educational programming. So in the last few months, we've had an info session on UMA Senior College for those who want to continue high-interest lifelong learning opportunities. And special thanks to local residents Peter Bickerman and Deb and Rob Peel for sharing their experiences with the UMA Senior College. We also hosted a statewide Zoom webinar on accessing free news using the digital main library, which is a free online resource of reference materials and databases available to all main residents. And of course, we've had some wonderful special events in the last few months. The annual community tree lighting back in December. In January, we had our annual Robert Burns Night, which was back to a potluck dinner this year, which was very exciting. And February's annual Take Your Child to the Library Day. Special thanks to library board members who put lots of time and effort into making these special events or making these events special for our community. or making these events special for our community. We continue with partnerships with the Trails Committee this winter, we hosted not one but two Full Moon Snowshoe hike events. One was actually a snowshoe and one was more of a hike. We love doing these all ages events to both highlight our library Storywalk Trail and the amazing Fairgrounds Trail, as well as to bring together community members of all ages to enjoy the outdoors together. We were also happy to partner with Jen, who has been fabulous with Reedfield Rec and the Age Friendly Committee to offer programming through Reedfield View in March. So the library hosted some knit and crochet classes for beginners, a fascinating presentation with Steve Woodson on discovering the fun of fine scale model building, and a book repair workshop with Brenda Lake, who is a longtime library board member and book repair expert. We also hosted two well-attended author events during March, so we had longtime Maine State Wildlife biologist Ron Joseph and also well-known hiker and adventurer Carrie Kish, who shared his most recent book Beer Hiking New England, which showcases a wide variety of fun hikes in nearby breweries throughout New England. And a huge thank you to June and the Weather Vane for providing their venue for that fun event. We continue to provide outreach with the local schools when possible. I think I told you back in November, I was getting ready to visit with a lot of the Reedfield Elementary School students during their library time. And it was really fun spending time with the kids, talking about how lucky they are to have two libraries in their town and the differences between their school and community library. And then we got to enjoy the Storywalk, the school location together. And that also is an ongoing partner project between the library and the elementary school. For this past month in March, which is Youth Art Month, we celebrated by collaborating with Reedfield Elementary School art teacher Nicole Blake to showcase Reedfield Elementary students' artwork in the Storywalk behind the library. And a special thank you to the first and third grade students who shared their art with the community. Speaking of art, this beginning in January, we started, much like the lovely little display area you have in the town office, we have we have invited interested Reedfield artists to showcase a few pieces in the library's circulation area. So for January and February, we featured the work of Reedfield artist Dana Britland. And for March and April, we have Kami Davidson. And I wanted to thank Chris Olson for spearheading and organizing this new endeavor. And we invite any local interested artist to get in touch with the library. They're interested in showing their work. Um. Am I okay on time?
So far.
Okay. Support for the library has many resources available for support for local remote workers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, including our physical workspace, much of which has been improved through last year's big push on opening the upstairs and renovating some of the downstairs workspace. The technology tools that we have and books related to all aspects of business, as well as online access to many databases, business information resources, funding sources, and trends and market research that can support our local business people. The library is also a great place for business people with special expertise to offer a workshop to share your knowledge with our residents. So for example, we've had a local health practitioner offer a workshop on healthy aging to seniors, we had a local small business person who created and sells a card game, offer a workshop on the game. A couple of years ago, we had local farmers come together to offer a panel discussion on the work that they do. So these types of offerings enrich our residents, but also provide opportunities for local business people to connect with with their community of Reedfield. So during National Small Business Week in May this year, the library will host an evening open house for any and all local business people, entrepreneurs, and remote workers to learn about the supports that we at the library can offer and to just enjoy time connecting with each other. We'll be sending out invitations to all Reedfield businesses soon, based on the contact information on the town website. Switching gears, I want to note a possible area of concern. So on April 1st, I sent an email to Eric and to the library board regarding recent actions on the federal level that might have state and local budget impacts regarding libraries. So as many of you probably know, there was an executive order on March 14th calling for the elimination of the Institute of Museum and Library Services, otherwise known as IMLS. So IMLS is a federal agency that awards grant funding to museums and libraries across the US. On March 31st, the staff of 70 of IMLS, which is the entire staff, was put on administrative leave. So while most library funding in Maine comes from local sources, including ours and Reedfield, its municipal dollars supplemented by some donations, private donations, and some grants. Federal dollars are particularly important in providing resources to libraries with smaller budgets, such as ours. So how that works is the federal grant funding flows from the IMLS to the Maine State Library and to all 50 state libraries. And then that money gets used the way in which that state library wants to support their state. So in Maine specifically, the Maine State Library has used those federal funds, which are through what's called LSTA, the Library Services and Technology Act. Those monies have come to benefit us in Reedfield in the following ways. So we get free gigabit gigabit internet to us and our and 243 public libraries through what's called the Maine School and Library Network. So Reedfield Library does not pay a monthly fee for our high-speed library internet. And we, in last year, we had, at the library wireless, we had 1,392 wireless sessions using the library's wifi. The Maine State Library also uses those funds to support interlibrary loan services to over 260 libraries statewide. So last year, for example, in Reedfield, Reedfield patrons borrowed 605 items from libraries outside of our town. And those that those items came in on a van delivery service that we get once a week, so those that whole system has been supported by these funds. Also ebooks and audiobooks to all Mainers through Cloud Library. So in Reedfield last year, Reedfield downloaded 1,918 free ebooks and audiobooks through Cloud Library. And then also delivering professional development training to library staff through free consultations and workshops. And I will say, as a person relatively new to the profession, these free trainings have been really important to me to then be able to provide the best services possible to our residents. There are other other services that are provided throughout the state with these funds that may impact Reedfield people, but I don't know specifically, and I can't give you the numbers. So for example, some of these funds support the online library, the online databases offered through the Digital Maine Library, which are resources for preschool through, you know, 80, 90, 100 years old. And but I don't know who accesses those in town and how, I don't have numbers. Also, they provide those who are blind or visually impaired with large print and recorded books mailed to the patron for free. So again, I I can tell people about that service, but I don't know who in our town specifically accesses those services, so I don't have numbers. So in terms of immediate impacts, I do know that as of April 3rd, a few days ago, the Maine State Library had spent all of their fiscal year 24 IMLS funds. So in terms of the remainder of this year, there's no, there's going to be no impact. But I don't know what impacts to the Maine State Library might come in the upcoming fiscal year in the future. So once I receive further information from the Maine State Library leadership about anticipated impacts to main libraries, I will certainly share that with Eric, with our library board, with regards to how that may impact the services that we offer and or the money we spend. So at this point in time, I just want you all to be aware of the situation. I do have a statewide Zoom tomorrow with library leadership, so I may have more information then. Or I may not, I'm not sure. So I just want to, at this point, ask if the select board has any questions or the public, if you have any questions, to please send them my way, and I'll do my best to answer when I can at the time that you ask me. So actually, I'll stop right there and just if if anybody has any questions up to that, and then I have a couple more things to share.
Maybe two more minutes.
Sure. Okay, so on to good news. We, in December, received $2,000 from the Digital Equity Stipend Fund of the Kennebec Broadband Partnership, which is a program of Grow Smart Maine. And with these funds, we have purchased a large screen monitor, a wifi conference speaker, noise-canceling headphones, a wide-angle webcam, and have been able to, with those new resources, offer a monthly tech class through the National Digital Equity Center at the library. So so far, we've had one on Facebook, using Facebook securely, avoiding frauds and scams, and I forgot the third one, actually, sorry about that. So this equipment is useful for other library library programs and services as well. And we also offer two hours of monthly one-on-one tech help, with a big thank you to Jaren, who has served as our friendly tech helper and was very busy for two hours this afternoon, so. In January, we received an additional $1,100 in remote work grant funds from the Maine State Library to augment our projects. So this wasn't something I had to apply for, they just kind of said, here's an extra $1,100. So the library board has voted to use this money towards electrical outlets on the backside of the building for people to charge phones and laptops when using the patio area in nice weather, and also to provide electricity for the many programs and events we host in our outdoor space, you know, in the summer months. So the other exciting news that I'm happy to announce, and actually, my library board, aside from Jackie, doesn't know this yet, they'll find out on Wednesday, but we did recently receive, we've been selected as one of 300 libraries nationally to participate in round three of Libraries Transforming Communities: Accessible Rural and Small Libraries, which is an initiative that brings community engagement and accessibility resources to small and rural libraries to help them better serve people with disabilities. So this initiative is a combined project of the American Library Association and the Association for Small and Rural Libraries. And we are one of eight main libraries to receive funding in this round of grants. This competitive award comes with a $10,000 grant that will help the library do a few things. So one is we'll host conversations with residents about mobility and ambulatory issues and access to the library. And then use the grant funds for some potential upgrades to the library, such as a push-button automatic door opener for the main entrance to the building, a designated paved van accessible parking space with marked and painted access aisle with appropriate signage, a paved accessible pathway from the library space to our existing ADA entrance ramp with appropriate signage for the approach and entry. We invite residents with ambulatory disabilities to take part in these conversations to discover the best ways to use these funds to make the library more accessible. And that's kind of a neat thing about this grant is that they gave us the money based on some ideas that we had that we thought might be good, but the important thing is that we have discussions for people who will be impacted by these choices that we make with this money and really figure out what is the best way to use the money. And we can change and alter the program proposal if needed, based on those community conversations. So if you're interested in getting involved or taking part in the conversations, please connect with me.
That's about it.
We will wrap up, so if if you have any questions, Jackie or I, Jackie is our board chair, she's here with me, and we would be happy to answer any.
Great report, lots of exciting things. Eric, are we still on schedule to pave the library this year?
So that's part of the discussion. And I think when we talked about during the budget process, we were going to be holding off until we had a better idea of what the actual reserve balances looked like. And we're still waiting on the final numbers from the auditor, but I think that we'll we'll have to, again, continue to look at that as a as a necessary but lower priority item.
It would seem the right time to do it together.
Yeah, I've got to look at the timeframe on when we have to expend this, I don't have that right.
Well, it sounds like those things may have been included in what we were doing already.
We did talk about the fact that we would be working to try to get that paved. Part of the reason why we didn't do it as a, you know, for the entire parking lot, or we we recognize that it might be a standalone item, and that's one reason why it was approached as the parking spot and the walkway, which does meet the ADA requirements and helps with accessibility. It doesn't meet the mud in the spring issue.
Right.
So then that can be addressed separately, I prefer it not to be, but yeah, we need to look at that some more.
I'd like to see that finished. I mean, that was one of those things we've been planning for years, and we keep pushing it off and pushing it off because it's lower priority. And if it's gonna, if there's an opportunity to combine that with this other it seems like a good time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great, anybody else? Thank you very much, really appreciate it.
If you could send the your report to Angelica, we can include it in the materials for the meeting. That'd be awesome.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Ah, so board and committee minutes, we're not opened up on this? Okay. Do we know who they came from?
Library opens base planning board and solid waste.
Wow, somebody must have sent in the solid waste minutes finally, that would be me. So thank you to everybody for submitting those minutes, I did look at them, I didn't have the list in front of me. I know we have two members of the public here, do you wish to speak to any other items tonight? No, and online, we have no one, so we will move on past that. So new business, we have a liquor license application for Kent Hill School presented in the new online format. And I believe, once we take a vote, it just gets signed online, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we don't have to sign anything physically?
Yeah, no, just take a look at it, I really appreciate the new format, I think it's clearer and easier to understand what's actually happening and what's being presented, so. I didn't see any issues with this, I I think they've got a very clear map and timeframe established, so I don't have any issues with this. But with all liquor licenses, you probably ought to take a vote on it, but also vote to suspend any public comment, you know, any public hearing that might be required.
So seeing as we haven't had any negative feedback or positive either from customers held at Kent Hill School for their adult members, this event they're requesting is for May 23rd, for just that day, for an hour and a half, being held at the Dining Commons. It's a party for the parents of graduates, did I get that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, and they submitted the required map and all of the information. So if anyone would like to make a motion, we can go ahead and approve that.
Make a motion that we approve the liquor license for Kent Hill School on May 23rd, 2025, from 5 PM to 6:30 PM. And waive any public commentary hearing requirements.
Second.
Nicely done, Jaren, that's awesome.
All in one breath, too.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, it is unanimous and can be signed electronically. Okay, moving on, the next item is the Volunteer Appreciation Brunch. And Eric, are you also speaking about, yes, roadside cleanup, so take it away.
Yes, a couple of volunteer events, trying to get these things scheduled in is always a challenge. But I did speak with the Weather Vane, and we were looking pretty busy for the month of of May. And I know your folks didn't want to necessarily get into June because things start to fall apart by that time with school and and just family events and all that, but so that the best option appeared to be the end of end of April. And so the Weather Vane does have availability on this date. This isn't, you know, set in stone, but it's it's a recommendation anyway, with no availability. So April 27th is what we're looking at. The time, I think, actually, we were looking at closer to noon, but we we can discuss that, whether you'd like to have it 10, 11 or noon. But it can be anywhere in that range. And again, this is an opportunity for us to just thank the volunteers. Also, we will not have had an official vote on the Spirit of America Awards, but I think we could probably work on that by consensus. And Kristin has told me that we are able to get plaques. And Kristin has told me that we are able to get plaques prepared for the recipients if, if we can make a, or if, if we can get the names and the information to them after the deadline, which is April 11th, 18th, April 18th. So.
So I think what you're suggesting is that you could just let the select board know via email and we could respond back if we're in the affirmative for those nominations.
Yeah, a straw poll. I mean, it's fairly unofficial. It's not, it's not a, you know, a legislative action or anything like that. So I, it's for, for timing and all that stuff, I think we should try to go for this and just get it squeezed in.
Any input for Eric on any of this planning? Are you happy with 10 or you think 11?
It is on a Sunday, too, just to.
Do we know if any of us can attend on this date?
But I see, why not?
I will attend. I would prefer not to be the only one there.
Well, I'm gonna try to be there. This year I can be there. I'll be coming back from New Orleans and like before, but.
The only one from the select board because Angelica and Kristin were there last year and did all the wonderful setup along with June and John. And it was a really nice event. So, okay, we're okay with this for the 27th at 10? And we'll ask if folks can come. It'll be an hour max, I would say.
Yeah, so I probably will bump it from 11 to noon just to get a little bit closer to that lunch hour brunch.
So we're not going to do it at 10?
I'd, I'd like to do it at 11.
Why didn't you say that?
I'm happy with 11. Anybody else? Okay?
Let's flip for it.
Okay, we're gonna do it at 11 on Sunday, the 27th. All right, next item of business is the roadside cleanup.
Okay, so this one, we originally thought we'd like to do it in conjunction with the roadside cleanup, but, or with the volunteer appreciation lunch. We'll probably do that next year. But this year, in order to get this out in the messenger and get lots of public notice, we wanted to make sure we could do this later on. And also, May is a better time to do it. This is about the time before the black flies get too bad, but everything's pretty well cleared up and we can get into the ditches and all that work. So this one, as always, we'll be providing materials, grabbers and gloves and things. We do encourage people to bring their own just because it's, it's always good to have your own gear, but we will have some available. And then we'll be doing 8:30 to noon. In the past, we've done just the, the signups and let people do it throughout the month. We're still allowing and encouraging people to, to do some of that, but we found that participations dropped off without the actual organized day of event. And so we're trying to get back to putting a little bit of emphasis behind that and try to get people together in one place. And notably, this is also on a Sunday. We're trying to drag out some of those kids and their parents that are on the youth sports teams that could never do it on a Saturday because they had sports games from 8 until noon and a little bit later sometimes. And so I think, we think by doing it on a Sunday, we can try to get a little bit more involvement from that crowd. So this is what we have proposed for the roadside cleanup.
I think this looks great. And just to note, we're doing it in memory of John Parent, who started this when he was on the select board. Sunday, May 18th. It's the week after Mother's Day, which is always the second Sunday in May. When Sean, Eric and I spoke about this, we, we spoke about asking, specifically asking people to come and do it, not just having them see it and volunteer. So I'm going to specifically ask the select board if we could come and do this together. Not maybe for the whole time, but for part of the time, because I think it sets a good example. So if we can come for even just a half an hour to be there to kick it off with other folks or to go out with our family or friends, whatever. But also, could we ask Jen to put this out formally to all those different groups that she works with in town?
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and all the committees, you know, like, maybe age-friendly could have three people get together and do a road that's, you know, more easily accessible since they're probably older folks. So not so much the ditch climbing down in and out of.
That's the fun part.
But you know, it would be, it would just be kind of fun to see that everybody kind of showed up and just did a little bit. And a lot of our committees have a lot of memberships. So to pull two or three people ought to be something that we could ask to do in recognition of our town.
I'd be glad to come, Catherine, and do, to the scene with you. But I'd especially be interested if I can have one of those trash can robots that collect the trash themselves in the video, in the picture there.
In the picture.
If we're gonna get one of those for us, that would be great.
I'll tell you what, you get some kids together and they can make one of those and you can wear it.
I can wear.
Quick story for you guys. When I was in Yarmouth, I lived in Yarmouth, they have a recycling mascot. His name was Will Be Green. And it was this Christmas tree-shaped thing. And, and they had this professional mascot costume made. And, and I got to do the Fourth of July parade. And even with ice packs and a fan, the thing was just so hot. But it was, I got, I got to be a mascot in the parade. It was, it was kind of cool.
Steve, I got an idea for you.
But anyway, yeah, so that was a bit of a side.
Oh, that's great. Eric, thank you for being on top of these things and for allowing us to give Jen one more thing to do.
Sure. Well, I apologize that the, the brunch, the volunteer event was a little bit crowded, but we'll, we'll get it next year.
Awesome. The last item on our agenda is covered up by a menu. Review the quarterly meeting calendar. I think we had already published this, but we want to make sure that these dates work and there is one change in April.
Correct. Yeah, so the select board meeting, the second board meeting is going to be on the 29th, provided that the board is, is in agreement. I did talk about this with the chair and vice chair, and it's just going to be easier for, for them to, to do a Tuesday. There were no conflicts on the calendar, so that's the, the proposed change that's on there. Otherwise, everything's, is the same. Some noteworthy events are the, the public hearings that are coming up and also the RSU votes. First, the, the school board vote and then the actual, in April. And then in May, they have their, their official vote that is what's finalized and goes on their warrant. And that'll be available shortly after. Those ballots will be available shortly after the town's ballots are available.
And what date are the town ballots available for absentee?
Monday, May 12th.
And is there early voting in person here or is it just absentee and show up on the day?
We, we do have the, the early voting available as well.
So you can come into the town office and you fill it out and it's put in an envelope like it's an absentee?
Yes, yeah, exactly. Yeah.
But it's sometime the week before.
Yeah, I believe it's Friday, the June 5th, but no, actually, no, Kristin, I think it's the 4th. It's Thursday, the 4th.
Yeah.
I always mess it up and say Friday because it's easy, but.
Wednesday's the 4th and Thursday's the 5th, so you gotta pick a day or a date.
It's, it's the 4th, yeah. Or the 5th. I did it again.
It's the 4th of June, whatever. It's the 5th of June. It's 6:5.
Days and dates.
So just for the select board, if you cannot make any of these meetings, please let Eric know in advance. So next Wednesday, the 16th, we have the joint budget and select board meeting where people can express their opinions and changes could still be made to the dollar amounts or the warrant language, because it's not set in stone at that point. The meetings on the 7th and the 28th are strictly hearings. People can speak to whatever they'd like, but no changes will be made at that point. The changes would be made by voting things up or down.
Of May.
Oh, I know I can't come on the 29th of April, which I do now. Does it matter?
Oh, it's okay.
Committed. Okay. And then we need to discuss the 7th and the 28th, just from the standpoint of our last year's discussion. So last year was the first year we had two public hearings for the budget. We did one so that it was just ahead of the absentee voting, so that those folks who were going to take their ballots home and think about them would have an opportunity to hear everything. And then we held another one that was much closer to the date of the actual town meeting vote, and that would be the second one on the 28th. And so I think on Dave's advice last year, we decided to keep both of those meetings in for this year. But we also spoke about evaluating if there's a need for both. And so what Sean, Eric and I talked about was how about if what we agree to is definitely doing the one on the 7th? And if we have incredibly low attendance, since that meeting would be recorded and on the website, not having the one on the 28th?
I was gonna suggest probably the same thing.
Okay.
And then make it really clear again that if we don't have any more interest, there's not really a lot of sense of doing the second one.
I, I think your reasoning was valid, that if there's a hot button topic going around in town and there's a lot of people coming out and they want to speak to it, then we should have the two meetings. And if there isn't something like that, then it's kind of repetitious to do it for no one in the audience.
It's a little anti-chromatic.
And maybe there's some way that we can convey that, even on the website or something, to say that, that's how we were gonna look at it, that if, if we're not getting any feedback about the second meeting and nobody's, or only a handful are showing up at the first, then.
Then the meeting will be, it will be available online for you to watch. It's the exact same presentation, because the meeting will be a rerun.
Yeah. Yeah, essentially.
Right. Okay, so we may or may not be holding the meeting on the 28th. And we should let the budget committee know that as well, Eric, that we've put in this discussion towards that date.
Yeah, I'll make sure that we include some discussion around that when we advertise and talk with the boards and committees about the, the meeting on the 16th.
Okay, so we have one more meeting in April on the 29th and a, a joint meeting on the 16th. We have one meeting in May on the 19th. And at least one public hearing on the 7th. And then June has two meetings scheduled, the 9th and the 23rd. And the 23rd would be the new select board. The 9th would be the last meeting of the current select board. Okay, anything else we need to attend to tonight?
Just one quick thing. It could be, it could be under other business, but I want, I just remind you folks that I'm gonna be out of town for the week, the April vacation, school week. Teresa will be, you know, default interim town manager while I'm out. And I've already talked with Sean and Catherine about the meeting agenda and materials for the meeting on the 29th. So I'll make sure those are mostly ready to go before I leave so that we can roll right into it, have everything flow as if it was not a town. So we're gonna, we're gonna prepare for that and, yeah.
And the 29th is when we will approve the town warrant articles with our yay or nay recommend votes. And then the 30th is the budget committee who will do the same.
Correct.
And we'll hope that they don't have any changes, so we don't have to go back and forth afterwards. Okay, seeing no other business, I take a motion to adjourn. Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. You're adjourned at 7:24.
Look at that.